Good evening. It's the six o'clock hour for October the 3rd, 2011, and we are going to call the City Council of the City of Crescent City a regular meeting to order at this time. Ma'am Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Westfall, here. Councilmember Shalong, here. Councilmember Ania, here. Mayor Protem Murray, here. And Mayor Slert.
I'm here, thank you. I'd like to welcome those that are here in person tonight, survived the first little storm of the season, early as it may seem, and also welcome those that are attending or are observing the live streaming and/or those who will see the rebroadcast on the local Channel 4. Mr. Ania, would you leave us in the pledge, please? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, universal, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney Black, do we have anything to report out of closed session?
Mayor, no final actions were taken in closed session.
Very good, thank you. So, we will, at this time, recognize acknowledgements that we have, and actually, the first one regarding the United Way, they contacted the city and asked us to delay that recognition at this time. So, we have a very important recognition, and I've asked Councilwoman Kelly Shalong to read this proclamation, a proclamation acknowledging the Knoll family for their contribution to the community and celebrating the Knoll Longboard Classic. And I have to say that as I headed south out of town on Friday evening, it was nearly a road jam on 101 South. I've never seen so many cars and longboards in my life, only to see a worse condition when I returned on Sunday in the afternoon. So, obviously, it was hugely successful. Ms. Shalong?
And you call that a worse condition? Before I read this proclamation, I just want to say that it's been an honor to be a part of the Knoll Longboard Classic. I've been volunteering for about 10 years, and I've learned, I'd never surfed before in my life, and still have not, and so I knew nothing about surfing when I got involved, but it's, I've learned so much and made so many new friends, and the Knoll family has become like family to me. And this last weekend was pretty special because we had almost 300 surfers, and 62 of them were children, or what we lovingly call Minnehoonies. And to, we, the youngest surfer we had was 22 months old.
Oh, thanks.
And it was just, I mean, it was just amazing. It's just such a wonderful family event, and I can't say enough about it, so. Tonight, we have Bev Knoll here, and this is a proclamation acknowledging the Knoll family for their contribution to the community and celebrating the Knoll Longboard Classic. Whereas, the Knoll Longboard Classic has drawn surfers and surfing enthusiasts from the world over to participate in this three-day annual surfing extravaganza, and whereas members of the community, business owners and sports buffs, all benefit from this event, both by participation, tourism, and by increased business activity. And whereas, the city acknowledges the community development efforts of the Knoll family over the years by their organization and sponsorship of this community-wide event, and whereas 2011 marks possibly the final year of this spectacular weekend event that has encouraged community enrichment. And now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Crescent City hereby recognizes the Knoll family for their dedication to the celebration of surfing in Crescent City and acknowledges the final Knoll Longboard Classic, and is assigned by our mayor, Charles Slert. And, you know, the people that are involved in this event, whether they're, you know, the Knoll family, or local volunteers, or people that have come from all over the West Coast to be a part of the event, are some of the nicest people you'll ever meet in your entire life, and that's what, that's why I keep volunteering. It's because it's, there's, it's just such a, I guess, on the beach, you say, there's a good vibe, and even Sunday afternoon, when we're getting ready to surf the finals, and we have all of our scoring, you know, that's done underneath a little tent area, and it's blowing like 25 miles an hour and raining, and you've still got 100 people down there on the beach watching the finals, and at the last minute, you know, we usually do the awards on the beach, and we were able to pick up the phone and call the fair manager and at the, literally, last minute, get the Arts and Crafts Building to move the awards, and everybody at the event, they just like helped. I mean, everybody dropped everything and just helped Bev get everything together and moved over, and it was, it was just a great, great way to end a really great day, so. I just can't say, and I could talk about it forever, but Beverly, if you would come forward, please.
Thank you. If I could, Mayor?
Please.
I won't say too much because I start crying, and I already did that in front of the county board supervisors, so I don't really want to get started on that. It was a great, great weekend. If this does possibly happen again, Mayor, could you not say a traffic jam? Caltrans doesn't like those words. It's a state highway, so we have to keep that traffic flowing, but yes, there was many, many cars, and we virtually had no major incidents there at all. We never do. Everybody's really pretty polite in moving through. Our traffic people are all volunteers, and they, some of them have been there 15 and 16 years. Now, to me, that is some dedication. We have a lot of volunteers. Nobody keeps volunteers for 16 years. We're very, very fortunate, and like Kelly said, she came on board there. I have to thank her for her dedicated work that she does down there. Everybody works hard. Everybody goes home tired, and I don't know why they keep wanting to do this, and they do. I mean, I had so many phone calls today from parents, from fathers, from mothers, just how great the weekend was and how tired they were, but can we come back next year? So, we have to take it one step at a time now. I've made a move. I've got to really think about it, but it's going to be doggone hard to let it go. It really is.
Understand.
Thank you.
Council, any thoughts or comments?
Sorry, I missed it. I was out of town for one of my brother's 50th surprise birthday party.
And I should say that growing up as a youngster in the LA area, I actually did surfing at one time, and the name Knoll was a very big name in the mid-'60s in the LA area.
Yeah, he was a very big man.
That's right.
One of the things that I should pass on to the council and to the people in the audience here as well, a lot of the phone calls that I got today were telling us that the one reason, one of the reasons that they come back is how good this community treats them when they come. They, the banks, the office supply, the restaurants, the motels, et cetera, and how good everybody that is down at the event, that is working, and all of the volunteers, and I think that should be a great deal of pride for all of us that we do that. That's why these people come back. It's not just because of me. It's not because of the, you know, totally the work. It's because this community is such a beautiful community. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
After that, we'll return to much more boring business. At this time, we will address the consent calendar, and there are three items. Approval of the regular meeting minutes of September 19th, 2011, of the Crescent City Council meeting, and then item six, approval of warrant claims list for the period September 20th through October 3rd, 2011, and then item seven, approval of the bi-weekly payroll reports for the period ending September 24th and paid September 30th, 2011.
Move for approval of the consent calendar.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the consent calendar passes unanimously with a five to nothing vote. Thank you. So, public hearings, there is no public hearing tonight, and so we'll move to agenda item number eight, reports, and at this time, we'll receive a report from Mr. City Manager, Mr. Palazzo, regarding an update on the pre-disaster mitigation grant. Jean, welcome.
Mayor, Mr. Council, good evening. The, back in July, the staff was directed to take a look at the pre-disaster mitigation grant, and we submitted a notice of intent to apply, and we received an email saying, you know, we're eligible to apply, and we were looking at two of our city facility buildings, the police department and the fire department, to apply for some grant funds to possibly relocate those buildings. Mr. Taylor went to some training here about three weeks ago to learn more about the grant and, you know, the details of this grant, a couple downsides that we found out. We knew going into this, there was a match of 25% of any of the fundings that we requested or applied for, and the maximum amount for each application would be $3 million, so the match, if we asked for the $3 million, would be about $750,000. Number two, the grant would not purchase property if the city owned the property, purchase the building, and the demolition of that building. Other item in that is that the property would have to be used in the future for either a park or parking lot, basically have to be taken out of commission and off the tax rolls. A lot of those are not that appealing on, you know, applying for these grants and moving forward. We did learn that there are some other uses, since we did not apply, you know, for instance, there's earthquake retrofit. We could have put in a notice of intent to apply for funding to retrofit the fire department building. Next year, you know, we can take a look at that, and, you know, maybe that's something that, you know, we apply for to get some, some money to do that. But since we didn't, you know, put in our notice of intent for those other specific projects, we're not eligible to apply for this year. So, at this point, you know, doing that analysis, our recommendation is not apply for these grants at this time. Let's reevaluate and take a look at, you know, our city facilities. I'm going to work with staff and consultants to, you know, try and narrow in where we, what we want to do and where we want to do it, and bring that back to the council in the near future, and then position ourselves for next year's, you know, possible grant applications to use some of these funds.
Very good. Any questions on the council floor?
No, just a comment. When I first read your recommendation not to apply, of course, my eyebrows went up because we always want to apply for grants, but it makes a lot of sense that we not apply. It would not be a good, would not be beneficial.
And I would just offer that Jean and I had a meeting with Senator Boxer's aide this past week, and there was some new light shed on, some options available to us, so those are other considerations. But I would offer that seeing 60 minutes last night, the lead story was about the recovery or attempted recovery of the people in Japan that got wiped out on March 11th, and clearly, it's going to be years in process to come back, and it just reminded me that we're sitting here at ground zero, and we have many deficiencies within our city hall and our public safety facilities that if we don't consider those issues and identify them, recognize them, and deal with them, then shame on us, because I think it's not a matter of predicting when an event will happen, but it's a matter of, or if it'll happen, it's a matter of when it will happen, and how prepared will our city be from a public safety standpoint in protecting life to the degree possible and/or property? So, I think it's, it's on our radar and should be there for sure.
Definitely on our radar.
Are there comments? Okay, thanks, Jean.
So, we just need to, to not apply?
Right. So, at this time, we will open for communications and specifically, public comment. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to the staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record after receiving recognition from the mayor. Please state your name, city, and/or county residency. For the record, public comment is limited to three minutes, and we're going to hold to that three minutes because there might be several people wanting to talk tonight. So, public comment. Mr. Miles?
I have a concern, and I have a little story to tell you. For the past week and a half in our downtown area, there's been a long-running incident with one person. Our merchants are struggling, and when you have one person shoplifting and burglarizing stores downtown, that harms their bottom line. I became aware of this Friday morning. Some mornings, I go down to Debbie Stogger's to have coffee. Her coffee's better than Denny's. She witnessed a person crawling into a back window of one of our local hair salons. She called the police. The police came, but by this time, the person had fled, and the owners of the shop that was involved, and my police department located this person at our bowling alley. They came and got Debbie to make the ID, and I kind of laughed at Debbie. She said she wanted a ride in the front seat, not the back seat, and Debbie went and ID'd the person. My police department did their job and booked this person into the county jail. Twenty minutes later, this person was on the streets. The problem is, I realized it this morning, when a big bus from the Department of Correction rolled into town and woke me up because the realignment have started in this community. My sheriff has made a decision, and I think this decision is hampering my police department in the sense that a clear message is being sent to the criminal element of this community that if you do something, you're not going to get booked into our jail and get hauled over until your arraignment hearing. That's wrong. I would hope this council would write an elected officer and more or less say, "We want the same protection that you have provided in the past," because I do believe a wrong message is being sent.
Thanks, Mr. Miles. Is there other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will close. Mr. Hoon?
Like a good public comment, go to waste. Tim Hoon, I'm a county resident, and I just wanted to, it's so easy this time of year to be proud of our city, you know, we have the Knoll Surf Classic that Councilwoman Kelly spoke about, and, you know, Bev Knoll and the wonderful things, and next weekend, Sea Cruise, you know, and that's such a fun event downtown, and I heard, you know, from merchants downtown, there's going to be another fundraiser in the alley and events going on, you know, for Sea Cruise, and that's so, so nice, but what I've also heard concerning the city is so many, I don't know, a dozen, just in conversation with people, positive comments about how wonderful the town looks without a tsunami landing, you know, the three-foot-high attic that used to surround the town. But anyway, it's really nice, and it's, it really opens things up, brings back memories to people who've lived here a long time, where there's a, you know, "I can't believe it." You can be at the post office and look down the street and see the redwoods, and that's what's, you know, people remembered as kids, but they haven't been able to do for many years, so just, so kudos to the city for following through on that and, you know, taking that down, and we're moving on to a next step, and I even heard the city came up with some money for, they're going to do a planting down there and tsunami landing, and so it's really nice, and the fountain's going, and, you know, the library's painted, and our town just really looks inviting and nice, so, but the, so it's not only, many people are noticing that and mentioning it, so, thanks for your decisions here. They had, you know, money to spend, and so, thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Tim. Are there other public comment? Ms. Morrison?
So, I've been, oh, I, after I presented you with the former McNamara and Heek Corporation about the cleanup and abatement about this beautiful town, it might look pretty, but there's a lot of crap underneath that's killing people. I was surprised reading the newspaper that the people you had hired for tsunami cleanup, they were behind over here working in this place, and they did not know that it was a toxic waste dump. They didn't know that it hadn't been resolved yet, and they were pretty upset to find out that nobody had given them any kind of protection, protective clothing or gear or any warning that, what kind of a mess they were dealing in, so I made sure I gave them one of these, told them to see, talk to their boss about it, and then I read the newspaper, oh, I read this first, and then, that's what got me really upset. I'd like to comment about the work crew that has been working behind Elk Creek area. There's been a tremendous amount of work done, berry vines, brush this grass, been cleared from the trail, and you can see Elk Creek and the old log ponds again. This is the best I've ever seen the area look. I would encourage those that like to walk and enjoy the beautiful area we live in to go to the end of Second Street and walk the Elk Creek Trail. You will see a beautiful area of Delnart County right there in your own backyard. Thanks to the work crew who was finally, who was friendly and accomplished something extraordinary. And here, what they say about the log pond here, a used drum storage area was located near the log pond east of the sawmill over the course of operation, which is like 40, 50 years, and it had Chapman P-180, contains methanol, chlorinated phenolics, including petrochloranol and tetrachloranol phenols, and these are all PCPs and dioxins, and they're the most carcinogenic contaminants known to man, that these young men were back there cleaning up for everybody with the tsunami funds. I don't know. Yeah, it's real pretty.
Thank you. Is there other comment? Okay, seeing no other public comment, we'll close public comment and move forward with continuing business in item number nine. Just consider waive full reading, read by title only, and adopt ordinance number 763 in ordinance adopting regulations to implement the Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act of 2000 and adopting the penalties for violation of customer service standards. Jean?
Staff recommends adopting ordinance.
Okay. Is there questions, clarifications by the council?
No. This is the second reading, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, is there public comment regarding item number nine? Mr. Miles?
It surprised me yesterday at the Wellness Center when they had their celebration for the community that around the tables, this item was a large discussion item, and some of the comments I heard, I don't have cable, I can't afford it, but some of the comments I heard, some of these comments were even expressed at the Democratic table there, was that half the time, cable connections don't work, and half the time, if you want to watch football on football night, especially if you own a widescreen TV, the TV broadcast comes through fuzzy. So, if my city is going to seek another franchise with charter cable, I would hope you'd ask them to get their act together.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Is there other public comment on this item? Ms. Morrison?
I would just hope that before you vote on this, that you study it thoroughly and make sure that any Wi-Fi's aren't harmful to people, any of the radio activity or any of the sound waves or radio waves, it's not going to be harmful to any people. If you're an expert on it, fine, go ahead and vote. If you're not an expert, you might want to check it out first.
Thank you. So, is there public comment? Okay, we'll bring you back to the council.
Mr. Mayor, can somebody address the question that Connie just brought up?
My understanding is that there's no implications of Wi-Fi regarding this issue. What, I don't understand what the problem is.
I have charter cable, and I have internet through charter cable. It's a wire, it's not a Wi-Fi, so. I think she's talking about going through the public air, the public air, the air itself. Charter, charter is a cable company, run by cable, and as far as the people that are talking about the channels, they need to learn that the Eureka channels that charter office are not in HD, so there's no way to see it in HD. The Eureka TV stations do not offer HD. You have to go to satellite to watch HD channels. So, there is no Wi-Fi involved that I know of. I have, I have their internet, and it's through a wire that attaches from the wall to my, my computer.
I do acknowledge that in our last meeting and the first reading of this, Councilmember Shalong talked about interruption of service at times, and I mentioned it also, and it is kind of a ongoing problem. I mean, it happened this weekend, and I think it happened maybe the very night that we had our last. had our last meeting. So it's a real issue, and I am interested in how we hold Charter accountable for the product or the service, the quality that they provide to us.
Part of the, part of the issue is if you're, if you lose a local channel, it's not, most of the time, it's not Charter. It's the actual tower of that local TV station and/or their digital equipment that's having issues, and it's not Charter that has the problem. If you actually lose service from Charter, you're going to lose all of your TV stations. There are HD channels available through Charter.
Premium, is that's right?
No.
Or, I mean, those next TV.
No, you just have to have an HDTV, and there are like ten or twenty HD channels available.
That's true.
Not with basic. And we do have under, on page three, under two, item number two, it says that the city shall enforce all customer service and protection standards. So I guess if someone does have an issue, they could report it to the city.
I move to approve ordinance number 763, adopting the regulations to implement the Digital Infrastructure Competition Act of 2006 and adopt penalties for violations of customer service standards.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert?
Yes, thank you. So the motion carries unanimously five to nothing. At this time, we'll move to a new business item, number 10, and 10A to be specific, to consider and adopt the revised fiscal year 2011 slash 2012 budget as presented. Mr. Plaza?
Good evening, Mayor, council. Probably not the best news here I'm going to present to you this evening. The, I've been working through our numbers for the last year and have an unaudited financials of our fund balance of $838,000. We have gone through our revenues and our expenses. Our revenues, you know, from this last year came in lower than we expected. TOT, sales tax, all, you know, what from our projections, you know, have come in lower. What we're presenting to you this evening is a revised budget to lower our revenue projections for this fiscal year 2011, 12, to match last year's revenues, kind of trying to get our, you know, budget more in line and balanced of, you know, what our revenues were for last year. Questions that I am asking is, you know, where have we been in the last five years or so, you know, with, you know, spending down our general fund reserve, basically the fund balance? I provided you a chart in your staff report. From 2007 to last fiscal year, we spent on average about $538,000 in our fund balance, basically dipping into our fund balance on an annual basis. So the budget that we have before you does not quite balance us out. It's still about $98,000 in the negative between our revenue and our expenses. Some of the highlights, the good news that has saved us, almost the last minute when we were putting the staff report together, we, the governor has signed the COPS allocation grant, which was $100,000 for this year, to the city. There's no guarantee that we will get that money next year, but we do have that for this year. And we also got another CHP grant in the tune of about $238,000, which will be distributed over a three-year period, which is approximately about eighty, seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars annually that we can use, you know, for our police department. So that's the good news out of this report. With that news and with this budget before you, I'm recommending that we do hire, there's a thirteen allocated positions for police officers in our budget. The thirteenth position has been frozen until we found out the status of these grants. I am recommending, you know, we hire that position in this budget. I'm recommending that the property clerk position be frozen at this time, and I'm working with the police department to, you know, do some in-house training on the evidence storage area, where they'll perform those duties on an in-house basis for now, until we can see where we're going in the next year. This budget does include a recommendation for the expenditure of $30,000 for the tsunami workforce crews. We do have a presentation on that to show the council what that is, and Mr. Weir can do that presentation when I'm done here, if the council still desires to see that. I've highlighted, highlighted the four projects. In a sense, it's spending $30,000, and we're getting about $150,000 worth of work because we have the crews to do, do that work. The PTA grant that we applied for going through the budget, we do not budget, our city matched about $8,400, that's back in the budget. And then there are some other changes, and there's a chart, and I can go through, you know, kind of individually if you want to go through each one of those items, you know, for clarification. All in all, what this means and what is, you know, presented before you needs continuous, you know, managing. In the next three months, I'll be working with staff to take a look at other areas that we can either save money or on the flip side, you know, increase some revenues for the, for our, for the city. I look at the city as a business in certain areas, and we need to take a look at how we're going to grow our business and work with our, you know, residents and business owners in doing so. The, probably the, being direct with this, in the next three to six months, we're going to have to come back to the council with possibly some structural changes in our organization, some cuts in certain areas, maybe services that we're looking at, you know, discontinuing until we can figure out a way to either increase those revenues or our economy, you know, comes back. We need to make those corrective measures within the next six months so we can move forward in the next budget year with a very balanced budget and take a look at our revenues and our expenditures and, you know, bring those revenues more into, you know, reality of what we think we'll get. The, you know, those, and those changes, you know, I'm not sure what those are at. I'm working with our directors and a lot of our mid-managers, next generation, kind of threw a challenge out to them, need to come to me, let's, you know, how is it that we're going to make these changes? They need to, you know, I think we'll work together. I already got a few ideas that, you know, we're going to pursue in the next couple of weeks, but these changes need to be made now, and structurally, we'll have to bring back that before the council.
Very good. Any questions immediately of Mr. Plaza?
I do.
Mr. Hoon?
Can you explain the COPS versus CHP grant a little bit better? The newspaper called me today and asked for those details, and I, well, I didn't get to actually speak to them, but I wasn't sure how to explain the difference.
The, from my understanding, hopefully, I may have to get Ken to help me out here on the, the COPS was a state, COPS allocation was a state-funded grant that went through the state. The CHP is federal, and we wrote a grant, and actually, there was a list, and there was only a list of, how many cities? Twenty-two cities that received that funding. It was nice to open that. I, I think Eric wrote the grant for us. You know, Crescent City was a top of the list, one, you know, police officer position. I think Sacramento and some other, you know, communities in the state, you know, got multiple positions out of that grant source. So it's, you know, state versus federal. Does that answer that question? I don't know if I have any more detail.
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Okay, so you, I was, I would like you to explain to me, because I've been very involved in our budget over the last several years, because we started an audit committee to get our budget back into line. Explain to me when you say that since '07-'08, the fund balance has been depleted on average by $536,000.
We took the 2.4 million that we had in 2007 and $838,000 that we have, you know, today, kind of averaged that out over five, five years.
I think this, sorry, I think this graph is really helpful. Show.
We took the average, you know, it's, it varies over the years. First year, can't.
Three years, average three.
Average three years. Thank you. Average of three, last three years. That's why Ken does the math.
I still don't understand.
I'm not quite sure how to, how else to explain that. Over the last...
I think what Mr. Plaza was saying is that three years ago, we had $2.4 million in reserves, and then we've had lesser amounts each year thereafter, up to this year where we have...
Eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand. So if you take each of those and then average them.
We're not overdrawn. No, but the way you, the way you're writing this, it makes the perception look like we're going a half million dollars in the hole every year, which is not the case.
On average?
No, because those are dollars that are in, like, our savings account. But you're talking about depleting our reserves.
These are, this is our fund balance. In 2007, you had a fund balance of 2.4 million dollars. This year, we have a fund balance of $838,000. And typically, a city should have about 25% of your general fund operating.
Right. Which is, which is our policy as a council. Correct.
That is my understanding.
Right. But according... I'll talk to you tomorrow. ... to the report. This council on average usually, if they've decided to spend anything in reserves, it's been up to maybe $100,000 per year. So that's why.
I think over the years, what has happened, and I, you know, wasn't here, don't know all the details, but our revenue projections in our budget have been higher than what has come in.
Right.
And at the end of the year, in our...
I know, but this makes it look like we're going into our reserves, like, on average of half a million dollars every year, and we have not done that.
But I think, I think what Jean...
This council hasn't approved a half million dollars of expenses, expenditures over our budget. Can you have them come to the microphone?
The numbers are taken right from the financial statements, and he was saying 2007, but it was 2007, '08, we had the highest balance over the seven-year period that we showed there of 2.4 million. Every point year after that is expenses exceeding revenues.
Projected revenues as well.
Yeah, projec, I mean, these are actual numbers. If you wanted to factor in the next year, the average would be lower because we've only got a $98,000 amount, so it would bring that average, you know, reduction every year down a little further, but it's taken the 2.4 minus the 838 divided by three years, and that's basically, you know, so it implies that there's going to be one over and one under, because that's about the halfway point.
But using this scenario, I think what Mr. Plaza is trying to say to all of us is there's a clear trend here, right? And it was relatively positive back in '07-'08, and because of the economy and various sundries, things have changed and morphed. And, I mean, my assessment, my personal assessment is that you have made some very correct assessments for being here in a very short period of time, that there are some structural issues confronting this city and this council in the future regarding the budget and the economics and the well-being.
One important fact, when I got here in May of 2008, which was basically a month and a half before this, this balance came up, council had never seen operating reports. There was questions about what the actual budget really was. So, you know, it was probably a good six months into the next fiscal year that we really started getting those numbers accurate. And when you don't have historical information accurately to look at budget to actual, it makes it real hard to make projections. And so a lot of our projections were, you know, off. I mean, the state had told us we're going to see a decline in our sales tax. Our sales tax was relatively flat, so it's hard to take that statewide information and tailor it down to our specific area that's not like the entire state on, on an average. It's the same thing I saw personally in property values. When I first got here, I came from Las Vegas, one of the hardest-hit real estate areas. That was hit real hard and real severe. You come here, it really hadn't happened. It was kind of a little bit behind everybody else, and we've been a little bit milder in the decline that we've had compared to, say, Fresno or, or Las Vegas, where they've had, you know, 30, 40, 50% declines.
A couple other things I wanted to point out. In your little chart here, in revenue increases, you should have $10,000 that would match the $10,000 expense for the Reader's Digest.
Yeah, we kind of netted that with the other grants. This is kind of just a chart to try and bring in some tie-in from what we approved in June to what we improve now. We had $27,000 in grant revenue. Trying to identify specifically where that was at was real hard, so we kind of netted some of those things out. So I think the other grants decrease in revenue, the $24,000, that's kind of taken that all into, into perspective. So we didn't have it specifically budgeted, but we had grant revenues in there that we couldn't identify with an actual application. So these have been pulled down, and we end up, you know, could end up having others that we don't have, and the $10 expenditure towards the Harbor District for those, that award proceeds, wasn't in the June budget, but now it's reflected in the one that's here today.
$10,000.
Yeah. Did I say $10?
Right.
I dropped the zero. It's usually not like me.
I, I want to see this budget corrected before three months.
I guess I would go even further. I mean, to me, we've been nickeling and diming our department heads to death, and I think that game is over. There, there's nothing else to nickel and dime. We've maintained currently full employment for all these years now. We have no furloughs, we have no layoffs. Meantime, I caught the, some of the cable of our neighbors to the south, Eureka Council and the Humboldt Board of Supervisors, and they've put a freeze on all hiring, and they are going directly to the various unions, and they are going to renegotiate the wages and salaries because they realize that to sustain the, their communities, they're going to have to restructure and rethink everything. And so to me, it's, it's come home to us also, that, I think that's a...
And that's why, it'll take me about three months to do that and bring that back before council. I'm not sure if I can do it any quicker than that, but I can strive. I'm not sure if I can do it any quicker than that, but I can strive to make that happen.
Don't you need consensus from this council to go in that direction?
I'm...
Yeah, because I don't want to see us lay off employees. I would rather make some cuts in expenses that don't affect the employees.
Well, we're to the point where we need to look at services. We need to look at benefits, BURs, healthcare. All that needs to be on the table at this point. We don't have a lot of room to start cutting other things in the budget. You know, the other, you know, asset now is employees. And that's why I need some time to go back and work, you know, with the employees and employee groups to, you know, bring back other ideas and possibly some restructurings so we can get this budget into balance. And, yeah, if it doesn't, can't get consensus, then I'm going to have to make some hard recommendations to the council.
Well, earlier in our budget discussions and workshops back in May, we talked specifically to council about black holes within the city. The cultural center needs to be revisited and rethought and how to turn something that's a liability into an asset.
Cultural centers, about $120,000.
The swimming...
Cost to the city on an annual basis.
The swimming pool is another wonderful community and public asset, but it's costing us a great deal of money. And if we had a hundred-fold increase in the usership, it's not going to get us out of jail on that, in that particular case. So to me, there are some huge issues to consider in the restructuring. And I guess for me right now, tonight, I'm having a hard time subscribing to this. I have several questions, I guess, regarding the police department. We have 13 now.
We have, we have 12, 13 allocated positions, 12 of them are filled.
Right. And I went and did some homework and have reconstructed the trends. And the trend we're on right now since July 1, with the overtime that we're paying to the PD, we're going to be at, my assessment is 88,000 by year's end in overtime. And...
We only allotted 50,000.
And we have a, $70,000 buys a police officer. So my concern is that we can kind of BS ourselves about the numbers. At the end of the day, we're going to be paying time and a half for overtime that, so you're paying a premium for that officer to work more. And then my equally big concern is that they're getting burned out in the process. And I think that's when mistakes or errors happen. So my understanding is that for the moment, we have 12 officers. The chief is on the streets. The lieutenant is on the streets. Paperwork isn't getting done. Training isn't getting done, which are not selective issues. They're actually mandated. And then on top of that, we have two officers on light duty. So I'm wondering how long that is.
There's actually three now.
Okay. That's worse, from bad to worse. So I'm concerned that, how do we cover the bases given the conditions? And if we're going to continue to do overtime to the tune of $88,000 over this fiscal year, then wouldn't it be prudent for us as a city and a council to consider hiring another officer so that we're trying to reduce the mode of overtime and burnout?
Mr. Mayor, isn't that what this 13th officer would...
It's a step in the right direction, but...
We had 14 officers last year.
So are you suggesting that we authorize another position to make the 14?
I'm saying...
I'm pretty sure we only had 13 last year.
At the end of the year, we're going to have, we're going to be paying for 14, is what I'm saying, based on the trend.
Wouldn't the 13th officer mitigate some of that, though? The overtime?
Well, let me pose this. I went back and reconstructed all of last year. And it appears that, I mean, there was a month, October of last year, there was no PD overtime at all. So the schedule was working good and you had all the people you needed. But there were months where it was $5,800 in overtime.
What months were they?
August, $7,952 in July. And when I added all of the overtime up, and that was with, in some cases, it indicated 14 police officers, and then for the second half of the year, it indicated 15 plus one part-time. We still ended up having an $84,000 overtime.
Actually, I have the numbers here in front of me if you can, you know, and...
Is this something you two worked out before you got here today?
No, actually, this is just information I've, you know, requested and have. And I can go back to, I can go back to 05, '06. 05, '06, '06, '07, '07, '08, you had 13 allocated positions. 8, 9, 9, 10, 10, 11, you had 14 allocated positions. 11, 12, you had 13. In 05, '06, you spent $61,000 in overtime. I'm rounding these off. And actually, I have turnover right here. You had two police officers that left that year. So you had some turnover.
How much was that, Jean?
61,000. 06, '07, you had 30,000 paid in overtime. And you had three officers turnover that year. And then 07, '08, you had $64,000 paid in overtime. One officer left, turnover. 08, '09, you had 75,000 paid in overtime. And it doesn't look like you had any turnover that year. 9, 10, 78,800, so 79,000. 10, 11, 80,000. And each of those years, you had, you know, one position turnover. So you start, you know, looking at that correlation, you know, on average, in the last three years, it's, you know, 77,000, you know, paid in overtime. Really no correlation with turnover and overtime, because the year that you had three people turnover, you had, you spent the less in overtime. And that was 06, '07, you had 13 positions allocated. So, you know, I think it varies with, you know, the workload, possibly, you know, with the services that, you know, the police, you know, provide. And, you know, that's something that, you know, we need to look at. You know, what are the other services that we're providing? And that's what I need the three months to do, is sit down, get in a really good feel for, you know, how our police department functions. I've sat down with lieutenant and sergeant and the chief and looked at schedules, trying to understand, you know, the whole operation. You know, we may need to look at, you know, how we are operating, what services we're providing. And maybe it's, you know, one or two things that we focus on that are really needed in the community and that we do it well with the staffing that we have. You know, in this day and age, those are, those are the types of things that we need to take a look at if we're going to balance this budget.
Mr. Mayor and Mr. Palazzo, I would just like to offer that we ought to look at the $30,000 a year we spend on adding FSA to our water. And in consideration of the constructive...
Is that, is that the fluoride that the public voted for?
Yes. And that's the issue I wanted to talk about. Mr. Black can probably give us some input on this. Catherine Kelly and I had a meeting today and she brought over some information and...
Can we, can we do that after the budget?
Well, it directly affects a decision that could be made about saving 30,000.
The issue is that we, we cannot take the fluoride out of the water. It's the voters. So we, that would be, that's not a moot point at this time for our budget.
You see, Catherine Kelly got this from the town of Selmer, Tennessee. And they said that they enacted a water additive accountability ordinance that is expected to halt any further use of the fluoridation product that has been the focus of the board for more than a year. Even though the members continued to support the public policy of water fluoridation, it doesn't repeal the city's decision to fluoridate. It just said that the chemical that they're using, which was pointed out in the constructive notice given to all of us by Catherine Kelly, and she said she never got an answer to this. Is she entitled to an answer on this constructive notice, Mr. Black, regarding the unlawful activity, misrepresentation and liability related to our official and personal duties in putting the hydrofluoric acid into our water and its contaminants?
I interpreted her notice to be a tactical device to basically threaten the city, that we're, the city's going to be held liable for poisoning people with fluoride. It didn't seem, it didn't seem like it was called for any kind of response. It seemed like it was an attempt to set the city up legally, which inherently, I don't, I mean, I think that's fine. I'm not saying that she was out of bounds for doing that, but I also don't think that it caused, it didn't call for a response, per se. It just was a notice to us.
Okay, so when everything was pointed out in here about the harmfulness and the test results now, don't we have a responsibility to do our due diligence on whether or not this water additive is indeed harmful to our public?
Aren't we talking about budget right now?
We are. I guess, I guess I would, just for a moment, I think maybe to help the situation, is ask the council, do you foresee that you would consider changing anything relative to the fluoride relative to our budget as presented tonight?
No.
Myself neither. Mr. Nea?
No, unless there's another chemical that we can do cheaper than us, the exact same thing. I don't know if there is. But that chemical we're using is perfectly legal and haven't used it.
So I guess I would like to focus the discussion on the budget at hand.
Well, actually, that is the issue, whether or not that chemical is perfectly legal. And if it is not legal, then we could be saving $30,000 a year. So I would like to have you each read a copy of this and what the town of Selmer, Tennessee, did.
Was any mail to us yet? Catherine, you sent an email.
I don't recall. I'd have to check.
Well, a couple of things. Yeah, so that's water fund.
Deal with two different budget, or two different funds.
What you're saying is the fluoride chemical is not coming out of the water.
Correct.
Comes out of the water fund.
Correct.
But has no effect on...
That would be, you know, evaluating the water funders who are fund accounts and saving dollars in those accounts.
So I'll propose that we proceed relative to the budget issues at hand. In follow-up on the police budget, I attended, that I had mentioned a breakfast meeting with Councilman Anea last month. And there were about 30 correctional officers retired at this meeting. And they actually proposed, how could they help and get involved in the city and participate? And would, could they be considered as volunteers to help man the phones for the police department and/or relative to material evidence? Again, these are retired correctional officers. So at the time, I thought, Mr. Nea and I both thought that this was very proactive and positive on members within the community to propose to help out. So is there something that could be pursued in that regard that could free up somebody?
They can become a reserve.
Well, there's a component of, you know, working with Chief Black on this is, you know, increasing our reserve force. You know, one of the things with reserves is getting, you know, the slot of times for them specifically, you know, within the shifts, you know, which could be a huge benefit, you know. But again, they are reserves and so we need to, you know, at times, you know, if they don't show up or can't show up within those slot of times and that, you know, we need, you know, firm planning, you know, when we put reserves out there to fill in, you know, specific slots.
I think a lot of our overtime, too, is event-driven.
And those are things that we need to look at a little more detail. How is our overtime being spent? You know, we're on 12-hour shifts, you know, is it the court time, you know, for the next day? Is it, you know, the reporting? Is there technology that maybe we can implement that's less expensive to, you know, cut down, you know, on that overtime because of report writing? So there's, you know, some different things that I think we need, you know, to take a look at. We need to come back to, you know, the council. And, you know, this is an immediate, you know, issue that we need to continue, continually to evolve it, you know, to balance this budget.
So two things for me is, for now, it seems like adding the 13th officer will help to mitigate...
Absolutely.
...the overtime. And for future consideration, I think we, I would think it behooves to have a serious dialogue with the county on how we can work together in terms of law enforcement and reduce costs.
It's curious that you raise that, the county. I had a visitor this afternoon before coming to the meeting, from the county, a doctor, and basically was begging me to come and join them tomorrow at a neighborhood watch up in the Smith River area because I guess...
Yeah, he called me, too.
And I guess there was Dr. Duncan and some others that were substantially robbed this weekend. And it took the sheriff something like an hour plus to respond. So the sheriff is already overloaded and it's problematic. And I know we have a mutual aid understanding and MOU that they support us and we support them to the degree we can, and I think the CHP. But I think in the real world, if I'm not mistaken, didn't the state just release the probation people or...
Early release.
Early release for state prisoners this weekend?
Saturday.
Didn't the state just release the first low-level prisoners from the state penitentiary system this, I think, Saturday?
Not 100% sure if that went through or not. I did hear there was a holdup on it, but I don't have a current answer.
But it's, it's going to happen. If it hasn't happened, it's going to happen.
Yes.
So...
If it happens, we'll let you know.
Pardon? We'll let you know. Yeah. Somebody said they'll let you know. You know, the, regarding the sheriff's office, they're having a difficult time, but Mr. Palazzo is correct. We may, we may have to come up with the, with the decision of whether or not we want to reduce services within our department. Maybe not take some type of low-level calls or reduce services, which I don't think the public wants. I think the public and the county, the county residents are very upset over the service, but that was something that the county chose to do. And waited an hour, hour and a half for a burglary call when your house has been burglarized and maybe have no other contact with the law enforcement in your whole life and have to wait an hour, hour and a half is not acceptable to, I don't think, any of our residents in the city. to, I don't think, any of our residents in the city. But we'll have to take that up as we come along. It's a matter of priorities, and I'm sure we'll be discussing that.
Right, but I think if we were to combine our law enforcement somehow with the county, that we, we would be able to save money. Both, both county and city.
We've, for two years now during joint city-county meetings, have tried to get the city department and the sheriff to work with a group of people to look at that. And it's been unsuccessful.
I don't think we've ever followed through with it, is why.
Well, because the sheriff's elected.
I understand that.
So he can do what he wants.
He never attends the joint meetings, but perhaps he could be encouraged to come to our next one.
It just seems that that's a, a more long-term solution versus an immediate solution, which is the dilemma, I think, that we're confronted with right now. Okay, I'm going to, I guess, talk to another issue. I have a concern about proposing to do good things that are beautification things relatively in the, in the city as part of this tsunami recovery. Even though I, I understand that it's a good value. The, to me, the dilemma is, it's like you have a fixed income and you go to the market and you see the special deal on a pallet full of cokes. And you can get it for $50. So it's a great buy, unbelievable buy. But at the end of the month, you're going to have a pallet of coke and you're not going to have the funds for, for basic food. So on some level, it seems to me that we're considering reducing our general fund reserves from 18.4% down to 16.3% to do these goodbye things that in a perfect world are proactive and aesthetically desirable for our community. On the other hand, it seems like we're nickeling and diming everything else in the budget. And so I'm concerned about our priorities that we're proposing to put expenditures maybe ahead of what they should. Ultimately, the, the plan is to redo Front Street. It's a major piece of our community. In the past, we've planted trees or made adjustments within our city only to turn around and do it a second time versus having a clear plan of where we're going and doing it one time. So I'm concerned about the economics that we're proposing to spend on visual improvements. And, and I guess specifically for materials, where we already have the labor force in place. And believe me, in a perfect world, if we had the funds, I would like to keep that labor force going forever because it made major improvements and accomplishments in our community that I didn't think I'd ever see probably. So it's been hugely positive. But we're down to brass tacks here from a budget standpoint. And so I'm having trouble with that.
And this is something that staff struggled with as well. Wasn't recommended lightly, you know, $30,000, let's just go and get it done. Couple of things that we discussed, and I think some pictures that, a PowerPoint that Eric has put together and provided, you know, will assist the council in kind of seeing, you know, what exactly those projects are. Part of it, you know, are projects, and you commented about Front Street improvements, you know, that I think, you know, Front Street, Beachfront Park, you know, Downtown Master Plan, those are all key to our economics and our future growth to, you know, hopefully change these revenues and start having them go north. We're going to, we would like to put these projects in place in the next couple of years, given funding sources. They're going to cost a certain amount of dollars. Some of these projects will, you know, the work will need to be done when we do that anyway. And getting it done now at a lesser cost to save those funds in the future when we, you know, hopefully within the next year, we'll find some funding to do Front Street. Hopefully those bring, it'll bring down that cost to do those, to do that project. There's also some other, you know, uplifting of, of curbs and things like that out there that, you know, this project would take care of. And, and we can walk you through those, those areas. So do you want to see that presentation at this point?
I think we should see it.
Sure.
Welcome, Mayor. Thank you. Good evening. Yeah, so I'll begin the, the presentation here. Very shortly, it looks like the presentation was skipped ahead a little bit, so. Okay, so Mayor Slert, you made the analogy as to, you know, we're, we're looking at the, at the pallet of coke that's possibly, possibly in the grocery store, and we're going to purchase that coke because it's a good deal. And believe me, I, I know exactly where you're coming from. As, you know, Mr. Blasio said that, that we did, we struggled with these projects. However, when we looked at it, I, I looked at it more as, you know, you need to build the garage for your house. And now you have the opportunity to build the foundation with free labor. So it's not something like coke that's possibly going to, going to expire, but more it's the foundation that you're, that you're looking forward to in the future. And you're trying to take advantage of the free labor and just purchase some materials.
You guys are good schmoozers.
It's an investment.
But it is. It's an investment in the future. And it's, what they're trying to do with these projects is, is it's trying to, to look towards the future and create that vision for our town. And sort of define the character of it. And if we do this correctly, and that's all part of the strategic plan as well, is to try to define that character such that it allows us to diversify our economy a little bit more. And when the tourist comes and wants to spend their money, we give them a place to go, a place that looks nice, a place where they, they have a sense of the, of the context of where they're at. You know, they're in Delano County, we have the redwoods, we have the seas and whatnot. And it's a nice place to be. So that's sort of the thought with it. And now we have the opportunity to put some of those projects in place. Or at least beautify the existing features that we have here or some of the amenities that we have with the opportunity to use this, this free labor, basically. Which to me is, you know, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. So it really is, is a value. When you look or talk about the, the RHS crews, you guys are familiar with, with the grant that RHS wrote and received, $5 million labor grant to help us with the economy. Just a huge opportunity for us. They're kind of affectionately known around town as the, the Blue Hat Crew. You know, as you hear people talk about them. And I can't tell you how many times I've heard people say that this city looks the best it's looked in years or has ever looked. And it really is amazing. Currently, they have over 250 workers out there working on projects throughout the city, the harbor, the county. They're doing all sorts of things to, to help those different agencies out as far as safety projects and pedestrian improvement projects and, you know, clearing out debris in low-lying areas, different things like that. So I, you know, I really can't thank Tim Hoom and Tim Pierce enough. They're in the audience tonight as, as well for the preparation that they did, the training that these crews have received. They're, they're truly excellent at, at what they do. As far as the city goes, the city has a big role in this as well. So I'd like to take this time to also thank the people within our organization, Jason Wiley, Ron Johnson. They've really done a tremendous job in, in organizing the crews and laying these projects out for the crews. This is a, it's a bittersweet proposal though tonight. You know, it really is. Because I understand the discussion that we're having and, and sort of the, the topics that, that you have to grapple with and the cuts you have to make to make purchases elsewhere. But this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And this, with this economy, it makes it hard for you folks because the revenues aren't there. However, the skilled workforce is because of the economy. So that's where it's a little bit bittersweet as to the opportunity. These are skilled carpenters, there are skilled concrete masons, skilled tile setters that, that are unemployed in our community. So by giving them the work and whatnot to do, then that money then comes back to our community. So with all that being said, I'll start into my presentation. So tsunami workforce projects. I'd like to just show you briefly what they've been able to accomplish as far as some of the major projects for the city. And then we'll look at the proposed $30,000 in materials that we're asking for tonight. So the B Street pier. As we looked at projects in and around the harbor and whatnot that could be done, our B Street pier was, was dilapidated as far as some of the, the maintenance and whatnot. You can see here that a lot of the top rails had, you know, rope marks worn through. And a lot of the planks, the, the spikes had, had basically corroded through and they weren't attached anymore. It became a, a real safety issue. So we were able to purchase over 11,008-inch-long spikes that each had to be driven with a sledgehammer. These crews put those in. They put in special pressure-treated top plate woods for the, for the top rail, as well as built some picnic tables and whatnot on the end. Another one of the projects that they're currently working on, you know, on a daily basis right now is the pedestrian improvements along Stamp's Way and Play Street. This is a boardwalk stamped pedestrian improvement. You can see these, these crews are, are very skilled in what they do. They're doing stamped concrete, very intricate-type concrete work. They've done an excellent job. There's a shot along Stamp's Way, you can kind of see the meandering of it. And it really adds quite a bit, I think, to the park. And I can't tell you how many of the pedestrians, you know, use this already, even though it's not quite complete yet. You'll see some of the entrances into the access ramps will allow for future artwork, which will tie into Front Street as well. So the thought being that once Front Street's developed, we'll really be able to tell the story of Crescent City through artwork, through our local artists, which we can sort of tell the, the history, the timeline, and really have some opportunity to take advantage of some of the natural attributes that we have. Proposed projects. So one of the biggest liabilities to the city right now is along Front Street, in which there were pines planted in tree wells many years ago. These pines have grown to the size where now they have actually broken the sidewalk. You can see in this picture here, they actually split it in two. Right down the center of the sidewalk, there are trip hazards up to about three inches right now. So this is a, a huge liability to the city. For us to try to take it on ourselves, this would be a monumental task that would, that would take all of our crew for weeks and weeks to actually take these down and then shuttle the wood away. With the use of the tsunami workforce, they have the skilled labor to do it. They have the chainsaws. We would assist with our trucks. All of the wood would then be taken to either the senior center or possibly can and donated to the community. The price on this is, in my estimate anyways, about $9,000. That includes the chipper rental from the Fire Safe Council. That includes about 30 yards of concrete to do the concrete repairs, which is, you know, in itself, another just huge benefit of using this labor force is they can then, after the trees are removed, they'll be able to go back, pour back the sidewalks, pour back the curb and gutters, all for just the cost of materials. And then as well as the asphalt to do all the street repairs. The second project that we looked at is, when we're, when you look at other towns and whatnot in, in the holiday season, they have a lot of, you know, lighting and whatnot in the parks. Our parks are somewhat disturbed right now with all of the concrete placement. And so the thought is that we could have this crew lay the conduit for the electric. And what we can do is we'll plant the trees. And then when the trees mature a little bit more, we'll be able to run actually little white lights in the trees. So as you drive down Stamp's Way, you know, it could look something like this. So the estimated cost on this one is somewhere around $6,500. And that would include all the wire, receptacles, everything. The conduit itself, which would be the labor-intensive portion, could only be about $2,000. And that's really the part that we would want to take advantage of by these RHS crews. Park improvements. So on the next couple of slides, you'll see dilapidated backstops and benches and bleachers that are in and around our parks, be it Beachfront Park, be it Peterson Park, Brother Jonathan Park. They need to be replaced. And right now is the time, again, to take advantage of this labor. They can do it for basically just the cost of materials along with, you know, our crews' help and expertise. You see, these are, this is a bench located at Peterson Park. You can see most of the boards are pretty well gone. These, this is a bench in the tsunami landing. This project would basically be to replace all this wood with a Trex type of wood that will last for a long time. So these projects aren't projects that'll just go away in the next couple of years. These are projects that will last for years to come. You can see this is the bleachers at, at Peterson Park. You can see in this picture to the right that the handheld here is almost rusted completely through. So again, we're talking liabilities as well as improvements. About $8,500 would cover all of the park's improvements. And in this is, is 100 yards of safety chips for our playgrounds as those are getting low. And there are, again, liabilities for the kids and, and people of the community as they use the parks. And the last project before you would be to tile all of the restroom walls. Again, we have this skilled labor set that includes tile setters and whatnot. So they would work with our guys as well because we have skilled members on our crew. And we would tile each of the seven public restrooms. The reason for this project is the restrooms, which I couldn't show you in this picture, have a huge graffiti problem. And so rather than showing you the graffiti, which I probably couldn't do over the public air, so I showed you our attempt to paint over the graffiti. And you can see this is what they look like. If you tile this, the thought is that they will have a much better result as far as just wiping the graffiti away. So again, there's about 4,000 square feet of tile that we think we'll be able to get done. We'll put the labor force on this. We think we can probably get all these projects done by mid-November. So with that, that is the, that's my presentation. Any questions or? Tim, would you like to come up?
Just the obvious one, that the safety chips, wood chips, decorative chips, couldn't that come from the, cutting down the pine trees?
You know, we can use those chips around our trees and whatnot as mulch. But the safety chips are really for the playground. And they're especially chipped wood. That basically doesn't have any splinters or anything like that, so.
And isn't it treated to be fireproof?
I believe so.
Yeah. Thank you. Tiling the bathroom sounds really good, but you know, we really need more bathrooms. I know we can't get them for that price, but I sure hope somebody puts it in the budget. We need more bathrooms around here.
And that's something we can definitely look at. Those restrooms aren't cheap, so we'd probably be looking for grant funding. And I think we've received grants in the past. The smaller restrooms go for about $50,000 for the concrete restrooms and the larger ones are over $100,000.
I agree. We do need, for example, a restroom in maybe the tsunami landing area because there's not any public restrooms in downtown. So I agree with that.
As far as benches and waste receptacles, I was notified that Alder Camp and Borrow Boys are capable of building benches and using trucks is a wonderful idea. So instead of just replacing benches, I wonder if we can also make arrangements to get more benches and waste receptacles about town.
Sure, we can definitely inquire.
So my understanding was that the grant was going to terminate at the, sometime during October, but is it extended? Can you tell us about that?
Just different people.
Oh, different work crew?
It's $12,000 limit.
Could you repeat that, Rich? I'm sorry, Mr.
I think he's going to tell us that there's a $12,000 limit per employee. But it's going to continue until March or April, May, June, I think.
And Mr. Mayor, Eric Quest City says his name for the record before you speak.
Mr. Pierce, welcome.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. My name is Tim Pierce and I'm a city resident. And I'm the project manager for the crews. And it's been an honor to work with these guys and gals, men, men and women, both. And I also want to back up and thank you for the vision that you had originally to take advantage of our crews. So to answer any of your questions, I'd be more than happy to. I guess the question was, how long does the Yeah. It is going to end March 31st. We are, it's kind of a two-part answer here. The, the majority of the workforce is, there's a window of opportunity right now with most of the people until mid-November. And so in taking into the consideration of these projects that are before you, I think the window of opportunity is right now. Eric mentioned the, the liability of the concrete. Eric mentioned the liability of the concrete, the streets lifting up. I know we're concerned about that in the city. But also it's the maintenance, like of the bathrooms. I know that the harbor with their new plans are going to have all tile in their bathrooms because of the graffiti problem. So these are all projects that I can confidently tell you right now that if you move forward on these, I do have the people power to get these projects done for you. I've had dialogue. We have some great workers. We have a custom log home builder as part of our crew. Obviously, we have the concrete people. We have electricians, plumbers, landscapers. We have the skills right now. After mid-November, we're going to be very limited with not only the weather, but the amount of people caring for it. So the workforce won't be as large, but.
I was wondering if we could get another grant.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be nice. But I'd be more than happy to answer any of those questions for you. The one thing that I would like to say is, being involved and being out there, I also get lots of comments and see people from all over, not just the United States, but from Canada and Japan and everywhere. I mean, when you're out there constantly on a daily basis at the city and the harbor and the county, it's incredible. And if you want to create revenue, you have to have a beautiful place to visit. And Beachfront Park is looking amazing. So, you know, it's, I do think that when you consider it, it's something that the beautification is something that's happening. It's present. You can see it happening. And I think that these projects will just add to that. So I just wanted to add the confidence that I know my crews can do it if you see your way to approving that.
Question. Even if we tile the bathrooms, there's still going to be graffiti. And I was just wondering why we aren't using community service workers to clean up that graffiti.
I don't think you can answer that.
I don't think we have.
Somebody should be able to answer that.
As far as community service workers, did you have a particular group?
I didn't know there were particular groups.
Are you talking about?
You know, probation, yeah.
They don't do that anymore because they have to have a probation officer or a supervisor and they won't supply those anymore.
Really?
Yes. We used to have those. Good idea. That's the reason, though.
I have a few comments, not no questions, but for me, I know that it's taking away $30,000 that we could probably use elsewhere, but it's, the liability issue, the trip hazards to invest $9,000 and save $60,000 and eliminate the liability is huge to me. And I think that even if we, by tiling and we would reduce the graffiti in the bathrooms, that to me saves expenses down the road for the maintenance that we would have to invest in continually trying to paint over rather than just wash off. So I think that we save money there. And basically by investing $30,000 in what would be $150,000 worth of projects, we're providing a little bit of economic stimulus by the payroll that'll be generated for the people that will be doing the work. So I think it's a wise investment.
Thank you. You don't have the money, though.
I'd like to comment.
Yeah, please, Mr. Nea.
You know, reading this, I've been reading it for the last three days, and it's hard to get by that we're still going to have a deficit of $98,000 at the end of June. And I was looking at these project, the first one, the removal of the pine trees around Front Street, that's an absolutely, we have to do that. And especially when I read in the reasoning is that it's already wrapped, the roots are already wrapping themselves around our water mains, our water lines. I mean, that to me, we have to do. The other three, I don't think it's urgent to do, even though we have the labor to do it. I'm worried about the $98,000 deficit by the end of the year, which is going to reduce our reserve fund even more. And so I have a hard time with those, with the other three. But I do like removing the trees along Front Street.
Can I ask a question about the trees along Front Street? I drove down there and observed them and took photographs and it seemed like at the east end in the parking lot areas, that there was something like 15 bull pine trees, plus or minus. And then that's up to H Street and then there weren't any. And then you get down in front of the Surf side and coming back a block or two, there seemed like there's like five per block. So the question I have is, do all of them have to be replaced at this time? Or is there a particular area where it's especially problematic?
Being removed.
Right.
Well, yes, and I think you hit it on the head. The trees on the east end of Front Street are the trees that are creating the most problems. They're the biggest trees. They're the ones that are really creating the trip hazards and raising up the sidewalks. That being said, it's just a matter of time. And a matter of time meaning, you know, maybe two years, maybe three years before the other trees will be doing the exact same thing. In fact, we've had to remove several of those trees when they've either fallen in windstorms or just by themselves with their sheer size, the roots have pushed up the concrete or the street and created the same type of hazard. So granted, if you want to split this project up, if you're going to prioritize it, the priority is on the east end. However, it would be nice to take all of the trees as they are going to create trip hazards eventually.
Could we get a chipper donated?
A lot of it, well, it's through the Fire Safe Council, so we can see. That's kind of through Alder Camp, Fire Safe Council. Their going rate was 200. They just informed me they're going to raise it to 280. That's all day with a chipper and a safety officer as well that goes along with it.
And again, in the perfect world, I'd be happy to take all the trees down at one time. The challenge is this doesn't seem to be the perfect world. The lights that are proposed for Beachfront Park, I guess I was a little surprised by that. In a perfect world, it'd be delightful and beautiful. I mean, hugely beautiful. But if I had the choice to put lights downtown to help support downtown, I probably would vote for that before I'd vote for putting it in the park.
You know, I would, I would agree completely with that statement. It's just now is the time, you know, the park is somewhat torn up. We have chase conduits, so to do it now in the park is a lot less expensive than, say, what it would be years down the road when we're doing it with our own forces and having to put all the grass and whatnot back. So you don't only have the force to put the conduit in, but you have the force to put the grass back and make the park whole. So that's sort of the time also when Front Street comes in, the plan there is to also have lighted tree wells. So you would have that continuity between Front Street and your park.
My question regarding the lighting was, how much is it going to cost?
For the actual lighting of it?
To, just to pay for the lighting.
You know, it's not going to be that expensive with the LED lighting becoming as popular as what it is and as commonplace. The amperage is very little. I don't have an estimate on it, but LEDs draw very little.
Is it going to be a hundred bucks a month or 5,000?
You know, it depends on when you want to, when you want to light it. I would assume this would be holiday lighting. You definitely want to do it around the holidays. If you want to have it as an all-year type of thing, your annual expense obviously is going to be a lot more. I would assume it'd be in the hundreds instead of thousands. We can come back with a more accurate estimate if you'd like. Tamara Buchanan, Tamara Layton, I apologize, just informed us that possibly the sidewalk funds could be with the Front Street with the tree removal, could be funded through RSTP. So if you take that amount that is stated in there, 9,000, you can basically cut it in about a third. So you can, you can say that's about 6,000. And a note from Mr. Hoon just came in that, yeah, there we go. Yeah, this is like a telethon, right? Let's open this thing up a little bit. Anybody on the phones? From RHS, they're saying that their grant could possibly pay for the chipping costs. So if you take the chipping costs out of there, you're down to just the asphalt, which possibly RSTP could pay for the asphalt replacement.
Hello, I'm Tamara Layton, the executive director of the Delmar Local Transportation Commission. I want to be clear, I don't make decisions about transportation funding that happens through our transportation commission meetings, but I would suggest to the city staff that when they have transportation projects, that they ask for money. It's up to the transportation commission whether they feel they can or cannot or whether to determine whether the projects are eligible or not eligible. But I would encourage the city staff to ask the transportation commission and leave that decision up to the transportation commission whether they can or cannot fund some of the projects that may or may not be eligible for transportation funding. I don't have enough information in this meeting to be able to make any recommendations or determinations, but I would certainly bring to my transportation commissioners any requests for money. That's my obligation, you know, as the executive director of the transportation commission, is to bring all requests forward. And so if that were to happen, then some of these projects might be able to be funded through some transportation funds, perhaps not RSTP, but pedestrian and sidewalk funding that we have a specific amount of funding that we're required to set aside annually for those types of projects.
Would it be possible to get it on the next transportation commission agenda?
The transportation commission agenda deadline is on this Thursday, so the answer is yes, it would.
Thank you, Tamara.
Well, we will definitely do that and see if we can't get the concrete and asphalt portion of that project funded through Altico. And I'd also like to thank the local transportation commission too for approving and funding the sidewalks that we have placed throughout the park.
You're welcome.
And then also this, this is news to me too, that RHS could possibly fund the chipping costs. So with those basically three components of the project taken care of, it's just going to be some of our staff time and then utilizing their crews. So that would be that.
It's a big step in the right direction. Okay, is there public comment?
I'd like to point something out. Most of these sidewalks between Surf Hotel, I'm coming from I Street, from the Surf Hotel down to the National Parks, all located in our redevelopment property.
What redevelopment property?
Okay. Well, we still, the governor has not signed the bill yet, Kelly, because I've been tracking this. We will be still having loan payments paid off. I mean, I understand you guys' concern about the deficit in our budget. But with the landing coming down and the work that these gentlemen have done there and in other places, where these trees are, like this one that was in front of the library, that big tree there was getting to the point that it could have fell on the roof of the library. What I'm saying is, for a number of years, you will, you still have people paying off the loan payments they made to redevelopment. That money won't be going away. That money will be coming into, you know, and this year, some of those people will be paying portions of payments in 2011 and 2012. I'd like to remark that because these areas are still within your redevelopment area and the sidewalks are and the landscaping within the redevelopment, but I believe you still have an obligation to maintain an area that was established a number of years ago. And you have free, more or less free labor up until March or November. And what I think's critical that you're not looking at is that as of, I think, the middle of this month, you're laying off the majority of your temporary park people. You know, the day, not too much went on because of the rain, but I remember October is one of our nicer months around here and so is November.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Is there public comment? Mr. Barnes?
This isn't necessarily a public comment, but I was speaking with John and he has 30-some thousand in his building maintenance budget. And we've always intended to tile these restrooms. I mean, we've been talking about it for quite a while. And so it was our thinking that we could use some of that building maintenance money to buy the tile to put on the restrooms and that would keep us from, we're going to have to do it one of these days anyway. So by doing that, it would be a cost savings as well as we already have some materials for the backstop. So I think we could use, if you don't mind us using some building maintenance money, we can probably get the materials to do the rails and some of those things.
I think for me, that's a good kind of partnership to have occurring, especially at times like this.
Well, I agree, but what buildings aren't going to be maintained if we use that money? This is a family affair here.
It's not that they won't be maintained, it's just a lot of this building budget is for things that might come up through the year. We're pretty good shape. I've got a roof I need to put on, housing authority building. We'll talk about that. A lot of this is, I should have talked to Gene before this on a lot of this, but that money is there. We had a surplus, I think, at the end of the budget year last year on that, in that one fund. So park buildings to me are buildings, but it's also in the park. So, you know, and that's, that's something we need to work out.
Is that, I have a question. Would that, could that money be used at the cultural center in the kitchen to make improvements and buy new equipment there?
Well, usually it's parts and supplies, so if something, you know, window breaks and that type of thing happens through the year, that's, that's the fund we use that on.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
What do you have to offer, Steve?
Thanks, John.
You got some conduit we can lay?
Burn stuff down for us.
So is there any more public comment? Mr. Hunt?
Tim Hoon again. So this is starting to sound pretty good. Initially, you're being asked for $30,000, but so we're throwing in the chipper and that's like four grand and then you might get some other concrete and whatnot. And the parks maintenance, they might come up with some. So maybe you could just set a not-to-exceed amount, you know, like, well, what would, would you be willing to chip in to get all these incredible projects on for the once-in-a-tsunami workforce event that we're having here? Would be wonderful to have this crew continue, but we have these incredibly talented workers, you know, throughout our town. And so it's like, well, so what's a reasonable amount that doesn't sound like you're, you know, spending what's a reasonable amount that doesn't sound like, uh, you're, you know, spending your whole reserve, but you're willing to spend something for the, uh, 'cause it not only makes the improvements, but it's al- also, um, helps keep these workers, um, working. Otherwise, we're, uh, that's, uh, uh, Tim Pierce's job to sort of, you know, we are, we're at the mercy of the city, uh, county and harbor to, to come up with projects to, to keep the folks working, and, and it's wonderful when they're such highly, uh, uh, productive and noticeable and, um, improvement projects for our, our community. So, um, anyway, just as a suggestion, what, there, maybe there is a not-to-exceed amount the council would be, uh, comfortable with?
I'd be happy to respond to that. I would say, uh, if, if we could hold it to a third, and I know that's a tight number. I'm trying to, uh, stop the hemorrh- hemorrhaging or bleeding.
No, I think that's a, that's a good point, especially with a lot of these funding sources becoming a little bit more evident tonight. Um, and yeah, we can, we can break up a lot of these projects, and we can do what we can with what we have, you know, that's, that's what we all try to do. So I think that is a, an excellent point, that we, we can try to prioritize these a little bit more and, and do what we can.
Matt?
Matt Hildebrand, City Employee.
You have a condo?
I don't. I don't. Um, I just want to put my two cents worth in, uh, working down in the beachfront park area, I get, I can't even count how many comments I'm getting from people that are really pleased with everything that's been happening in the community. It does look better than it has in my lifetime, um, and so I, I don't want to see that excitement go away. People, I mean, I think tonight, it makes it obvious that people are excited about this, and they want to see these improvements continue. Um, I totally understand the financial aspect and, and appreciate that the council wants to, um, be careful in that area, but I also appreciated Councilwoman Murray's wise words, um, and I would just encourage you to do as much as you possibly can. Thanks.
Thank you, Matt. Is there a public comment? Mr. Dillard?
Paul Dillard, with the County. Uh, there's some good things happening here and taking advantage of some cheap labor, and it's some good input, and that's some great stuff. Uh, I want to go back to the total budget, if I can, in that, uh, you're talking about the police department, and that's why I showed up tonight to talk about that. And I'm glad to hear that our new city manager sees the need there, and I heard good responses from the council, uh, and the COPS grant, the CHP grant, and things going on there, that's all good, but I'm interested in officer safety, 'cause when off, when overtime drives to fatigue, people make mistakes. And mistakes manifest in two ways. Either I get an officer hurt, or I get a public member hurt. In either case, we can't afford either. So I support you in this tough decision with budgets the way they are. This is a tough decision, but we, we need to move forward. One of the things that happened in Corrections years ago, there was a study done, and we found that we had staff hurt, and this happened to be on overtime. It just, that's the way it works. So, uh, this is a tough decision. I hope that we can go forward and make those decisions and reduce that overtime. Uh, I think that the civil liability drives it either way you go. I think, uh, Miles made a comment today about what happened with the county jail. You can expect more of that, and we're gonna be released because, city and county people are gonna be released because the state's funding the others. So we need to be aware that our crime's gonna go up. As for Catherine's comment about, uh, combined enforcement, I support that strongly, I've always supported that. We had a group get together in ninety-eight, ninety-nine, I don't know how many of you remember that. I'm su- sure City Council remembers that, uh, and we were on the way to having a combined city council, and I'm not gonna throw out there where the blame was, but we had legislation bill being introduced to enable us to do that, and one of the sites backed out. Um, anyway, I, I hope in my lifetime I would see that we would adopt a joint city council, or a combined city and county. We're just not big enough to support all the other stuff. The other thing I would raise on cutting down the trees is that, uh, I hear giving it to the, uh, senior center, that's all well and good, but I know we can surplus out equipment. Can we surplus out wood? If, if we can surplus that out and get a bid and make, make money, there's a lot of wood down there. If we can make money on that wood, we ought to be making the money, 'cause the senior center gets grants from the feds and different things. They need money, too. And, uh, with that, you got some difficult times, I support all of you. Uh, I don't know why we don't raise our TOT, we probably don't have control, you don't have control of that, but we need to raise some things around here, we need to explore, we need to get more revenue. I'm not a guy that wants to pay more taxes, but we've gotta do something here. All right?
Very good. Thanks, Paul. Any other public comment?
About the budget? I have a comment about the budget. I thought I was talking about the landscaping.
Uh, Ms. Miles, uh, this will be the last time on the budget.
Okay. I have a concern, and I've been intending these meetings for years and years and years. Uh, I'm aware there, that our TOT taxes are down. In some ways, I remember the words of Dennis Burns, and I think a lot of you have forgotten Dennis's words. We are giving a lot of money each year out of our budget, even though the, the money is collected through TOT, to the Chamber of Commerce and the Tourist Bureau. Dennis used to say, so did, uh, Mike Scabuzzo and also C.R.A. Smith, and these are previous council members, that's, was saying that the money we give the Tourist Bureau and the Chamber should be based on the amount of total revenue created by our bed tax. Not too long ago, Bob Berkowitz got up here and he did you guys a little song and dance, and, and I heard, overheard a discussion today that we need to do a better job of getting people from Marin County and the South Bay to come all this way to visit us. And I have to say this, 'cause I'm concerned, I want a safe city, I want to live in a crime-free zone, and not have to see the number of tweakers that are on my city street because of the problem with the drugs in this community, that it may be time, that when you guys look at your mid-year budget, you need to think about how much money you're giving to organizations that are membership-based. If they can't do a better job of increasing their membership, I believe you're doing a disservice to the rest of the community because you're not getting your bucks worth.
Thanks, Mr. Miles. Any other public comment?
Please, Mr. Barnes. Um, what we're gonna try and do is a comprehensive sidewalk approach with, uh, the, uh, Local Transportation Commission, and try to look throughout the cities, because a lot of the transportation money is focused money, meaning that it can only be used for certain things, and so the community has some, uh, money for sidewalks, and so what we'll do is we'll look at a, uh, list of the projects that really needs doing, because if we can get the materials, only have to buy the materials and have the labor, that would be a good use of that, those funds, so that's what we're gonna try and do if the council is okay with that. And because it's such a short timeframe, that's why I just thought I'd mention it tonight, if you have no problem with that, then we'll put a list together and see if the crews can do the work, and if we can get the money from LTICO to get the materials.
Very good.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Sounds fantastic.
Any other comments? Okay, bring it back to the council. Mr. Plata?
You know, one thing I've been saying, uh, to staff and others in the community is the passion that I found, you know, with city staff, and tonight, you know, the example, everybody's jumping up, looking for this money, trying to figure out how we're gonna do these projects, and, you know, I, you know, applaud them and commend them for that, 'cause I, I think that shows a lot of passion for wanting to make this community, uh, you know, have a wow, have a pop, you know, let's, let's do these projects. A budget is a snapshot in time, and we all know that, you know, it's going to change, it's going to alter. We don't know what our numbers, uh, TOT numbers are, you know, through the summer months, you know, we're optimistic that, you know, maybe we had, you know, better, you know, the normal summer month. Uh, we're gonna know that, you know, come January. Uh, we're going to, you know, continue to, you know, with, you know, at a staff level, work, you know, with, you know, looking at reductions, uh, in expenditures, trying to raise our revenue. Uh, there's a lot of components economically that need to come together. A lot of them were mentioned here tonight, there's, you know, some cost savings, you know, the, uh, Cultural, um, Center, we talked about that a little bit. Uh, we've already have, uh, a team of staff for people that have kind of volunteered to take a look at that and figure out, you know, wh- how we can retool that, you know, what kind of reuse, um, you know, possibly, uh, to help start generating, you know, some revenue from that, or at least, you know, fix it up. And so, you know, I already have, you know, w- we're just getting started, and, you know, I think there's going to be a lot more to come, a lot more decisions to be made in rightsizing this budget, you know, in the next six months. A lot of it is going to be based on the strategic plan, uh, that we're, uh, launching with the city council, kind of look at our priorities. Uh, it's gonna be, you know, what the public wants, you know, the police facilities, the police service, uh, you know, and the other services that the city provides, you know, we're gonna hopefully get, get some input from our community on that, and it'll help the city council and city staff put those priorities together. So this is, you know, just a start of, you know, at least a six-month, you know, probably longer process to keep in line, uh, with our revenues and our expenses. And I do not know, I wish I had my crystal ball, what's going to happen next year, you know, with the economy, with the state, uh, with everything else going on, so there may be, um, other things that we need to do to keep our budget balanced. So, in that, you know, we stand by our, uh, recommendation for this evening, and our commitment to come back to the council in January with, you know, further alterations, changes, hopefully some good news with revenues through the last three, four months.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Plata. Any comments by the council?
No, they don't have any further. I have a few comments. I agree that our budget is a tool and, and it, it's very helpful in our planning, but we do need to remember that it's a tool. And, um, I'm, I too am hopeful that the TOT will show better numbers in January. Uh, I, I think that with the creative, um, vision that our staff has on how we can take advantage of the terrific, um, workforce that RHS has brought to our, um, uh, benefit, I think that it's worth it to see how much we can, um, achieve with these goals that are identified for the workforce project. I, I think it's, uh, it would be who us to make that kind of an investment, and, um, with, uh, the offerings from the Local Transportation Commission possibly, and our own, uh, budget from, um, our, our staff, that I think that we, we can't afford to do this. I don't think we can afford not to.
I think I agree. Uh, the, the beachfront, uh, park lighting is probably, um, the lowest priority. It would be nice, um, but it would be last on the priority list for me. The other three, um, especially the park and the trees, the sidewalks are definitely liabilities. I get complaints about our sidewalks all the time. Um, I think our TOT numbers are gonna be better. I've been hearing great things from the local hotels. Um, I've had a couple clients in the past month say that they barely got into the Best Western, um, they were just full, uh, quite a few nights, so I think we are gonna get good numbers from our TOT, so.
Um, would it be possible to have Lieutenant Scott, since the chief's not here, uh, address the issue of overtime and/or burnout, his assessments? Lieutenant Scott?
Welcome. Uh, yeah, the, uh, overtime, like Kelly mentioned, uh, events definitely take up a lot of overtime, but all it really takes is one person to call out sick or get injured, and, and it's, those forty-hour work weeks add up real quick because we're twenty-four-hour operation, and not just that eight hours a day, so that's where it, it really adds up really quick. Um, the officers are, are getting a little tired, uh, you know, you can't really prevent injuries and, and some of the other reasons people are on light duty, but, um, nevertheless, uh, with the grant, that'll, that'll help a great deal. Um, and so I think, uh, you know, the fatigue is definitely there, and, and we're trying to spread the overtime out as much as possible, and I know I've been covering a lot of shifts as well, um, and, and that's really helping, so, uh, we've got our detective out there on patrol as well, and, and that's another, uh, big help, but there are some things that are sort of not really getting the attention they probably need right now, but, but that's just the way it works sometimes. So, um, the other thing I wanted to mention real quick, going back, is that we pride ourselves with a two-minute response time for the city of Preston City, and so, uh, as a police department, that's something that we really, uh, strive for, is making sure.
Two minutes?
Two-minute response time.
Awesome.
That's what we want, and that's what we look for in our statistics, uh, to make sure we're providing that service, and so, anyhow, I just wanted to throw that out there. And any other questions?
So you think that the, with the grants that we're getting, uh, with the additional officer, that that will alleviate some of the stress and overtime?
Anything else. I mean, that's, that's the bottom line.
The, the hard part is the unknown, like having three officers on light duty all at once, you know, that's, that makes it tough.
It's unusual, but it does happen, and we've seen it in the past before.
That's out of our control.
It really is.
Right.
Yeah.
But the, the additional officer should, do you think, uh, do you or not think that it, that will help, too?
It will absolutely help.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Absolutely, yes.
With, with the, uh, additional officer and, and the, uh, three officers on light duty currently, uh, do you believe that we're gonna probably stay close to this trend currently for overtime for the PD?
Yes and no. I, I mean, adding a, a person to the, to the department is, is gonna help. Uh, it's gonna fill one of those positions, one of those officers that's out right now, it's gonna fill that, uh, that shift that's not getting attention, that, that, that we're working overtime to cover.
But that's, that's months from now, right?
No.
We hire that person?
No. Doug's already been recruiting.
We haven't done.
We, we authorized him to start the recruitment process.
They did, they did the interviews, but they haven't done the backgrounds, the psychol- it's gonna take a month or two to hire.
Well, I think what-
And then training. So you're gonna have overtime for months to come, you know, am I correct?
I think what you're, you're probably getting at is that when we hire someone, uh, we do have to do a background, and we do have to do a psychological exam, those are California post requirements, and sometimes that does take a month or more. Um, we can probably try to speed that up, uh, the city manager might want to comment, but, uh, California Commission on Post does require a field training program, once the person's hired, and, and if they're a lateral, then it's, uh, six weeks, and if they're not a lateral, uh, just out of the academy, brand new, it'd be a minimum of twelve weeks training. We have the staffing to do the training right here at our police department, but just an idea.
I was just gonna say that I was, uh, told that we had some people apply from other cities, that our current police officers that just got laid off. So-
I don't know.
I'm just curious, if we were to hire someone that was already a police officer with experience, do you still have to do the background check and all of that?
Yeah, those are requirements of California Post. Um, it is, it does put, set us back, we just don't have a choice.
But maybe more or less a lateral? Maybe more or less a lateral transfer, is that what you're talking about?
Well, it really depends. I don't know how, how in-depth we want to get.
Yeah, well, with the hiring process, you, we have all applicants have gone through their interviews, you know, word go this evening, we'll ask the police department for, I think, the top five candidates and we'll start doing our background and the testing, that probably takes about a month and then they can, you know, narrow it down to their top candidate after that and then we can hire. It is my understanding that all these candidates are post-certified, so that helps, you know, with that process.
Okay.
Lieutenant Scott, you referred to some things are not getting attention at this time?
Well, for example, myself and Detective Doyle were the ones on patrol today and I had about two hours of scheduling I needed to do and there's a pile on my desk that still needs to get done for the next about three road, or pay period. So just those kind of things. We have some programs that aren't getting attention, 1122, which is some of our equipment that needs to be done and things like that. So evaluations, you name it, there's, there's some things that I'm not getting to, that's for sure.
But until we hire somebody else, another officer, we're going to be in the same boat.
That's right.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bring it back to the council.
You know, I wanted to say one more thing about the police department. You know, I think it's almost like saying it's an honor for our city to receive this hiring program, cops from the federal government. We were one of 22 cities in the state, there's 432 cities in the state. Crescent City was one of 22 cities that received this funding and-
How many applied?
Several hundred, according to this, this release from the federal government. They, they based it on, they valued the importance of fiscal distress and against reported crime and community policing strategies. So they understood what our budget was. They understood the high crime rate we have here. It's interesting, I did a check today, we've had over 70 burglaries in the first nine months of our year. That's two burglaries a week, one every three and a half days. For a small city like this, that is way too many burglaries, way too many. And they also based it on community policing strategies. What that means is our police department has the crime-free, multi-housing one, we have other programs, VIPS, the VIPS program, Explorer program, and they also based it on community partnerships that the city police department has with the community. And that scored us a lot of points for that because we're one of the few departments that actually works with the community we have. And for the next three years, for a total of the next three years, we're hiring an officer and the total amount of that grant is $238,737. That's for a police officer for the next three years. And I think our city needs to be very proud of that and that we have that partnership and that we need to continue those partnerships with the community as we do now and hopefully we may be able to reapply in three years. It's very, very tough competition and I'm really proud of that fact that the city was able to get that. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Ania. Thank you. Other comments?
I move to approve adopting the budget presented this evening with the modifications to the workforce budget that we've discussed this evening. And I would like to see, even if it's just a progress update, a little snapshot in time on a monthly basis until you have a good feel for how we're going to move forward in 12, 13.
Are you saying the complete $30,000 or are you saying $10,000 or are you putting the money amount on?
No, I said with the modified discussion that we had with possible dollars from transportation, with possible dollars from the building department, maintenance department moving into being able to purchase the tile. Jim said he already had some parks stuff that he could use. So whatever, I think Mr. Palazzo can make that determination. I think it looks like it's probably only going to cost us about $15,000 instead of 30.
May I recommend, you know, if you want a hard number, it's probably easier for us, you know, adopt it with 20,000 instead of 30 and then we'll take all these, all this input what's already in the budget from the building maintenance and we'll take, re-look at the numbers and we'll give you an update on what we can get donated, what can come from other funds. If the money isn't enough, then we'll start prioritizing these projects and I think we have some good comments and input that we can go ahead and do that from this meeting.
So do you want to?
I would like to add a couple of things to it.
I have a motion on the floor, so I need to-
State a dollar amount?
I need to amend my motion to, to cap the workforce expenditure at $20,000.
I'll second the motion. Now we can talk.
Okay, and I would like to consider a couple additions. Review the PD in 90 days, fast-track the retention of the new police officer and put a hiring and spending freeze on everything.
What's in the budget?
Right. Anything else has to come to the council?
Absolutely.
I think that's, I think that's how we're operating right now anyway.
Okay, so we have a motion?
Do we have a second?
You have a second? Okay. Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalone?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Sclert?
Yes. So a motion carries unanimously at five to nothing?
Nice work, everybody.
Thank you. Do we need to address item B?
That was the new one.
To-
That's for the- Special meeting agenda?
Special meeting agenda.
No, actually to direct the staff to return with a mid-year budget update.
In my motion, I asked for a monthly update.
Do a monthly and we'll definitely do a mid-year come Jan-, January.
Okay.
We'll get that.
Very good. Okay. All righty. So at this time, we will close the city council meeting and go to a special meeting of the Crescent City City Council for an item of new business. And it is to consider and adopt a resolution entitled Resolution Number 2011-37, a resolution of the city council, of the city of Crescent City rejecting the single bid for the Elk Valley Lift Station and Harbor Seafood Waste Water Processing Lift Station reconstruction and determining that the project be performed by the, by city employees. So is there a public comment on this issue? Mr. Miles?
I personally believe, and that's because I know people in the water department and the street department, and I have full competency with our city electrician and other staff, we have the capability to do this project on our own. And many times, I think, instead of putting things out to bed, I'd rather use city staff because that's the reason why we hire them in the first place.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Is there a public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment. Mr. Barnes?
As you know, we received one bid and it was fairly high, it was very high. And since then, we've made a number of calls to the lift station suppliers and also spoke with the contractor that bid on the project. As we spoke with him and we spoke to the suppliers, it appears that the best approach is to talk to the different boiler pump suppliers as well as the panels that control the pumps and motors and make a purchase of the parts and then next spring, well, probably be next summer when it stops raining and the flows get down, to go ahead and be in a position to install the materials. And I don't believe that the city forces will have to be all that involved, although we'll make some of the plumbing hookups and do some of that work. But by hiring specialists in the electronics and so on, we should be able to get the project done much, much cheaper than the bid we received. And I'm thinking in the 200, under 250,000 and maybe as low as $200,000 instead of the 600,000 that they had suggested. He called back, wanted to renegotiate his number and we, so we told him what we were planning on doing. He says, "Well, yeah, I think that might be a good way to go," so.
Will there be a cap on this or are we, are we going to have change orders on this?
Well, two things there. One is, before we purchase, we will let you know what the costs are going to be for the, for the materials purchased. And also, we'll keep the, we'll figure out exactly how we want to do the project, who we're going to need outside our own forces to do it. And then as we develop that program, then we'll come back and talk to you about it. It isn't that complicated, although there are some things that make it less than straightforward. So one of the things to keep in mind is all the costs are going to be paid for by the county CSA and the harbor. So these aren't city costs and even our time is paid for by the harbor and, and the CSA. So they're the ones who really should be concerned about the costs of this, although what we get concerned about is how much city resources is this going to take and how long will it take and so on. But anyway, the thing we're doing tonight is rejecting this bid so that we can go ahead and, and contact the suppliers, purchase the equipment, you know, go through that.
Is it safe to say that under your directorship at the city and working at the county that everybody concerned is going to be looking for the best price and looking out for the city CSA and the county and the harbor's best interest?
Mm-hmm, that's, and-
No, no, they're not looking out for our best interest.
I asked him.
The, I've lost my train of thought. One of the things that complicates the project is that both the harbor lift station and the Elk Valley Lift Station have to be done at the same time and turned on at the same time. And the other thing is the long force main on the Elk Valley Lift Station make it such that the two days it's down, you have to be doing something with all the water coming in. Can't tell everybody to quit using their water. We could shut the water off to the Birch Ocean View area, it would solve that problem, but probably raise a lot of problems with other people. So what you generally do is you bypass the lift station and that's usually not very hard to do, but when you have a force main from Elk Valley Road all the way into the treatment plant, then you have a problem that you have to deal with. And so some of the logistics of getting everything hooked up and, and controlled so that everything works together, there, there is some complications to this, but we do know how to do it and we, we should be able to do fine on it.
You're in charge-
If we can't, we'll go get somebody that can, you know, we know what we can do and what we can't.
You're in charge of the means and methods.
That's right.
Can you assure us there'll be no corruption?
Yep, I think we can do that. I'll have to keep an eye on Eric.
I have an actual couple questions. I was curious why the bid came in so high? Was there something that we, usually when you expect a bid to come in at 200,000 and it's three times that amount, you, we didn't do a very good job of saying what we needed or?
I think a couple of things. When we talked to him today, the fact we're trying to get it done at the end of the season is one thing. And he was concerned that he wouldn't be able to get everything he needed to get the work done on time. And also, it seemed like he was very willing to negotiate, which means to me, you know, as he went through the cost of the materials, he said it's about 160,000 for the, the materials. And so the only thing left is for him to put them in, so.
Are you kidding me?
No.
Wow.
And we, you know, I mean, it's very specific what has to be done and we know, so that, you know, that there's really no, he couldn't really give us a good reason.
Yeah.
But he didn't mind negotiating.
Yeah.
So.
That's, that's quite a nice little profit margin. So my other question is, I always forget, so I just wanted to be reminded on how, what is the rule for public works kinds of projects in relationship to using city forces?
Well, generally, what we're going to do is get prices from the pump and motor suppliers for the things we need from basically their lift station builders. And so we'll get the materials priced out because that's a specific thing we can just purchase from a supplier and we'll get, we have three different people we can go to, we'll get prices on that equipment. We also have panels, electric panels, and then the parts inside those panels that provide the electricity and controls for turning on and off the motors. So that is a, can be the same group of people or we can go to specialty suppliers if those people are giving us too high, if we feel that they're giving us too high prices because they sell the, those people will go out and buy the cabinets and the guts in the cabinets from somebody else. We can go to that somebody else and get them ourselves. So we'll look at purchasing the materials and that will be the way we purchase anything, which can be any number if we go to several people. And then when it comes to hiring somebody-
I'm actually talking about the labor.
When it comes to hiring somebody to do specialty work, we will be, I think we have, we can do it for $30,000 if I'm not mistaken in that, anybody we hire would be under that, would be quite a ways under that. And generally what we do for that is the same thing, we talk to different people unless there's only one or two people in the community that can do that and then we can just talk to them and maybe work something out, so.
I'm, I'm talking about-
Could I answer the question?
Thank you.
Okay. The resolution that you have in front of you-
Yeah.
Is the legally correct way of stating it?
Okay.
And what we're doing is we're rejecting the bid, the single bid that we received, and we are authorizing and directing that the project can be performed more economically by employees of the city-
Right.
Than by this contract.
Right, I read all that.
All right, and that's, that's, that, what you read in that resolution is what the law says and you're, you're meeting the requirements of the law.
Okay, so it seems to me, and I'm just recalling from memory, that there was a cap on-
That-
that there was a cap on public works projects for using city forces.
In some circumstances, it's 5,000 dollars. And in some circumstances, it could be as much as 30,000 dollars.
Okay, so we can...
But, 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 but that doesn't apply to this. This is a project where you went out to bid, and the bid, or bids sometimes, that were received were far in excess of what you believe, and your staff is telling you city forces can do it for. And so, the bidding laws are intended to prevent public agencies, and the caps, the 5 and the 30,000, are intended to prevent public agencies from just being in the contracting business.
Okay.
But they're not intended to force you to waste money or overexpend monies on private contracting when, in fact, in some cases, your own forces can do it.
I got it, thank you.
I had one question I wanted to ask.
Please.
You know, our city forces, our city workers, especially in the summertime, are used for lots of different things that they can't do in the winter. Is that going to compromise anything that they need to do in the city? Because they're hired to be, you know, in the city and not really do special projects that are outside. I just don't want them to take that project on and then neglect some city stuff that needs to be done.
I don't believe this is going to be a long project. I think it's a quick project for our guys to do.
All right, that's fine.
Any questions?
I move to adopt Resolution 201137, rejecting the single bid for the Elk Valley Lift Station and Harbor Seafood Waste Water Processing Lift Station reconstruction, and determine that the project be performed by city employees.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Madam Kirk, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Shalone?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert.
Yes, thank you. So, that motion carries unanimously, five to nothing. So at this time, we will adjourn the special meeting and reconvene the regular city council meeting to finish up our work. Okay, I think we're moving into city council items, legislative matters. We have two issues. Issue A is to appoint a voting member for the Redwood Empire Division Legislative Committee. Is there anybody that'd like to volunteer?
I'd like to volunteer, Mr. Mayor, after attending the annual California League of Cities Conference in San Francisco. I'm very much interested in this.
For me, that works perfect, because I had your name at the top.
Thank you.
I would appoint, or move that we appoint Catherine Murray to the Redwood Empire Division Legislative Committee.
Second.
I have a motion of second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so the motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, and then, part B is receive an update on the League of California Cities' resolutions that our city manager, city attorney, and Ms. Murray and Mr. Ania, all attended. Whoever would like to speak first?
More of a receiving file, Protan Murray is their voting member at the League of Cities. And I went through some of these, most of these resolutions were discussed at the council meeting. There's a few added, you know, to make it out of the... So I highlighted with this report on status and what happened with each of those resolutions.
Good. Ms. Murray?
Well, it was interesting, being a delegate. I hadn't had that honor before, but it was also kind of confusing, because they removed a number of the resolutions, and then they added two more that the council had not discussed. And one of them was something that I felt that the council, on a whole, would agree to. And then the other one, we abstained from, so... It was an interesting process, and...
Which ones did they add?
They added seven and eight, two. So, the Resolution Number Seven for Improved Transparency in Public Access to the Proceedings of the California Legislature. And that was done because there was a vote taken in the dark thirty...
Yeah, middle of the night.
Right, and without any public input. And so, the league decided that we needed to have a resolution encouraging the transparency. And I felt that our council would agree to that.
Very well done. Okay, so I guess at this time, we will move to reports, concerns, referrals, and council travel or training reports. Mr. Ania?
We were there for four days, and that was, that was very, was a very good training conference. It's always interesting to note that, that, you know, you talk to several other council members from various cities, and it's nice to see that Crescent City, we're doing a lot of the right things. And some of those cities are really, really way far in debt, don't know how they're going to get out of it, and are looking for answers which really aren't provided at those meetings. They're just a guide to help you. But some have some major, major problems and don't even know if they're going to, what they're going to do in a month from now. And we seem to be planning and moving along with the city, which I thought was very, was very good about that. So there's some good things that came out of those meetings to help us do it. And we attended different, Councilmember Murray and I attended different sessions. So we were able to maximize the conferences. And the other thing, I went to the Habitat Dinner last Saturday night at the Porto Center. There was a lot of people there, and as you know, they picked a family, the Luna family, out of, I don't know if they're from Smith River. It's an extension, pardon, out of Smith River. They're an extended family of nine. And they have a lot that was donated to them in Smith River. And so now, the, that dinner was to raise funds to start, to start saving for, to build the home. It's going to be a five-bedroom home. So it's going to be their biggest project to date.
Ms. Murray?
Yes, thank you. I attended the Delnart Solid Waste Authority Meeting, the Local Transportation Commission Meeting, the Local Agency Formation Commission Meeting, and Tri-Agency. And significant about the Tri-Agency meeting is that there is a lease that is being authorized to sign with a new company, Blue Top Marine at the old Surfside Brewery. So, that is a new business that's coming into town and very exciting.
Instead of the Green...
Green Star. They're still looking for the funding to help them to start their second plant. They still intend to have another plant here, but they, they don't have the funding for it right now.
And what's Blue Top Marine?
They will be exporting hagfish to Korea.
Wow. And they're also going to have a fish market.
Fresh fish market there as well.
So it's the same...
It's the same company. They were going to go into west coast crab. And they found out, they were able to find out that the Surfside Grill was for sale still. So that's why they're moving there. They want the bigger building.
And Green Star is in a holding pattern?
Yeah, Green Star wouldn't...
So, but the hagfish business is the one that was so controversial with the community?
Oh, up in Oregon? In one community in Oregon, but the other one where they started...
I mean, here.
No, I don't think it was controversial here.
Yeah, it was at the planning level.
Was it? Well, there was a couple of questions at planning, but I don't know that... I thought it passed unanimously.
I didn't know what I heard. I heard we have a planning commissioner here agreeing that it did pass unanimously, so...
Wasn't there concerns about the actual, the business, and that they were asked to not be in another community and all kinds of stuff?
There's a, there's a whole list of, of...
Conditions.
Conditions, there's a long list.
I knew it was... Use permit.
It was controversial.
Anyway, back to my report.
Sorry.
No, but I'm excited about this new company. Don't forget Sea Cruise this weekend. And then, I've heard a lot of great comments about tsunami landing. And also, at our Tri-Agency meeting, we have two harbor commissioners, and they reported that the harbor work is coming along very nicely, swimmingly, you might say. And that the goal to have it open by crab season is still, they're still on point for that. There's a point-in-time count that's coming up December 15th, and that is regarding the homeless. And they're still accepting donations, so they need food items and clothing items for the people who are being counted. And if you have any donations, you can contact the Community Assistance Network. And lastly, I was very honored to attend the California League of Cities Conference. It was a great delight to be with my fellow council member and our new city manager. But the, some of the highlights were that we had a coastal cities luncheon, which we had the new executive director from the California Coastal Commission in attendance. And I have high hopes that we will forge a better relationship from now on with the California Coastal Commission. We also, as Councilmember Ania mentioned, different workshops. I attended the parliamentary procedures workshop, a leadership workshop, and a workshop on signs for improving downtown businesses. And I haven't typed up my paper on that one, but I took copious notes. And then also went on pension reform. So, there's a lot of information, and if we could, it would be nice if more of us could attend next year, because there, it's just an invaluable opportunity to learn and to network. And I thank the city for sending me.
Very good. Ms. Long?
I attended the Solid Waste Management Authority Meeting. I was told that you've had some meetings regarding the Solid Waste Management Authority, so I thought maybe you could update us on that during your report tonight.
Sure.
I worked the Noel Longboard Classic and wanted to thank Gene. He came down and volunteered three hours of his time on Saturday. So, it was a great way for him to see what one of our community events is like. We have an airport meeting coming up this Thursday, so I can report at our next meet, actually, I won't be at our next meeting. But I will provide a, an update on the airport. And I was going to ask if the city actually, the point, what's it called? The point in time?
Point in time.
Point in time? Did the city employees, Gene, work on having a location for donated items? We talked about that at the last meeting when Ken gave their report. If you don't know, that means no. All right, okay. And that's it.
Very good. Ms. Westfall?
Yes, I'd like to first extend a warm Crescent City hello to Jerry and Phil White from Tennessee, who drove across America in their motorhome to see the Redwoods. And we met them while we were all walking our dogs down at the beach, and they enjoyed our area very much. I attended a tea, bid brainstorming meeting. I'm sorry to say it was poorly attended. There are only two board members and three members of the public. But one of the interesting things that came out of that was a suggestion by Harley Munger, who said that we should be looking at attracting businesses that don't depend on foot traffic. In other words, the scope of our downtown is changing, and that we might start looking at insurance agencies, doctors, dentist's office, and things like that, since we don't have a lot of foot traffic. I thought that was a good suggestion. I attended a tea party meeting that had a woman speaking on effective communication. I wanted to bring up another potential profit center for the city. And this comes from saggy pants ban. Albany, Georgia, has made 4,000 dollars from bagging, from banning saggy pants, and have, it went into effect nine months ago. First time offenders pay a fine of 20 dollars. Subsequent violations can result in fines of up to 200 dollars. Firelaters cannot be imprisoned, and the ordinance allows 40 hours of community service to be completed in lieu of a fine. All right.
Somehow, that sounds like a Jay Leno joke.
I noticed that when Connie Morrison was speaking about contaminated, toxic area behind Safeway, Eric Taylor was shaking his head, so I'm curious to know. I meant to ask him what was going on, and I missed that opportunity.
I think it's because the, the most, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the most toxic part of it has already been cleaned up.
Okay.
That is correct. No, I think that it's... Excuse me.
I think he was shaking his head, because the area where the workers were working is not the area that's toxic.
Okay.
The pond itself is the most toxic area. And the, the whole vast, flat area behind Safeway is also contaminated. But the Elk Creek, per se, and the bushes and the area back in there where the trails are, where the, you know, there's public walking trails back in there. Those are not the contaminated areas.
But wasn't it, wasn't the part of the site capped?
No, it hasn't been capped. But that's the remediation plan, is to cap it in the future. So there was, there was a million, over a million dollars' worth of actual excavating and hauling material.
Right.
And then...
That's what I'm talking about.
They closed it back up. Yeah, so they did excavate a lot of the worst, the very worst contamination. And now, the remediation plan for the whole rest of it is to fence off the pond and don't let people go there, and then cap the rest of it with either a deep layer of dirt, which would be the ball-diamond idea, or actual physical, you know, asphalt, or a combination of both of those.
Good.
But she was substantially misspeaking about the facts.
Yeah, that's why I was hopeful that somebody could have said something. But we can correct that. She can get that information. The septicage, I saw the memo from Jim Barnes and the letter from Mike Young, and I hope that Mike Young is here when we discuss that septicage issue and the digesters. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. I had two meetings with the city manager, Plazo, with the bid board officers last week and today. And they've been collecting information and input from the bid participants regarding objectives and achievements that they would like to see the bid accomplish. And they took input, I think, was it four or five days last week? Both in the morning and in the evening time. And they got a fairly good response, so we were happy to hear that.
Good.
I had a pre-solid waste ad hoc committee meeting, potentially, with Supervisor Sullivan and Hemmingson. And we specifically talked about the city being a participant in some role and putting it on a calendar agenda, whether it's a city agenda or county and city joint meeting agenda. I attended LAFCO, and we had a Big Rock Water District Annexation occurred, which encompasses a new part of National Park area. Attended LTIC and RCTA meetings. And then, had a coordinating, general coordination meeting with Mr. Plazo. And then, had a couple of meetings with residential parties regarding ongoing neighbors disputes. regarding ongoing neighbors disputes. And then, Mr. Palazzo and I had a meeting with Senator Boxer's Representative Brandon Ida, who came here last week, and we met for about an hour in Mr. Palazzo's office. He, he was the one who had called three times on the day of the tsunami event between eight o'clock and ten-thirty in the morning, so he was really on the job regarding what was happening here in Crescent City. They were very proud that they had championed the COPS grant, and the grant for the airport for advertisement, I think it was like a two hundred, seventy thousand dollars, seventy-five thousand dollars.
Two hundred thousand, I think.
And so, after that, we talked about our tsunami response, the recovery at the harbor, the recovery at the city, and then he and I took a tour of our public safety facilities, the fire department, the police department, city hall, and Beachfront Park, and then we ended up at the harbor and observed the dredging going on. He was very impressed with the city and the harbors moving forward and how much had been accomplished, he just was, couldn't believe it.
I thought he was actually here when we had our-
He was.
-post tsunami meeting here in this room.
He was.
Yeah, okay.
So, he's, he's followed up, and I think this is like his second or third time here. Took pictures back to share with the senator of our progress. And then, uh, oh, we had a, a meeting, Mr. Palazzo and myself, with the Crescent Fire Protection District regarding a training personnel RFP that had been prepared and now has gone out. So, it was kind of a busy two weeks. Okay? Go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, regarding the solid waste management meetings, were you meeting with Tommy again?
We're talking about it.
Talk-
Mr. Hemmingson or Sullivan, we're gonna try to contact him and see if they could set that up.
So, you have not met with Tommy?
No.
Okay.
Also, I guess I would, I would like to offer, perhaps the city could consider offering up a letter to the sheriff regarding the issue of bookings of people that have committed criminal acts, and then, that are being released fifteen minutes after the fact, because I think it's sending the wrong message to the criminal element, that, you know, the implication is there's a free ride, and I think since the sheriff is an elected official, it would be appropriate to the city offer a letter, asking him to follow up with the cases when they're booked, because what, right now, what's happening is, is they're being booked, they're being put back on the street, and then apparently, they're not showing up to the hearings or arraignments. Would that be appropriate?
Will, will we comment at all about that, is the county sets the limit on the number of bookings of the people that can be in jail, they set it at a hundred, and if it's at that capacity, they're gonna release people. Even though the jail can hold many more, the county set that for budget reasons. Doesn't mean we can't write them a letter and say we don't approve.
I, I recommend we copy it to the county then, as well.
Thank you.
I'd like to recommend, could I recommend that maybe you get some input from the police chief before you send off a letter?
Okay.
I'll talk to the chief black when he gets back, and then it's not-
Very good.
Kind of a diplomacy question.
Good, sure.
Can I get back to the council on that recommendation?
Great. Is there anything else?
I heard you have one item that came up at the end of the day today. It's good news on our sports complex. Mayor Protem Murray sent in in a meeting with the state representative and staff a few weeks ago. We got word today that they're coming back. We'd like to, you know, if other officials wanna visit the site and visit with staff. So, I'd like to maybe see if either Mayor Protem Murray or somebody else from the council can sit in on this meeting as well, can, some consistency there, and, you know, and off the line.
The Nineteenth? That's a, a very good news, great report. I, I would just offer that I think we should throw some major fanfare at them, and the reason I say that is because the last time around, that's what I heard they were critical about, that other communities literally brought out the cheer team and the football team and the fire department.
Yeah, let me figure out, and, you know, who, who is coming and kind of what the expectations are.
Good. I guess my word would be that we just don't take it casually.
Right. No, this is, this is good news.
Very good.
And I ran into Eric Taylor this afternoon, and he mentioned that we'll have another site visit, and it will be from the, the higher-up decision-makers.
That's correct.
So, it's an encouraging sign for us, at least we're in the running. And he also said that they were considering our request, Eric, we might be able, what's the terminology for the, where our center point for our population and the parks ratio? Anyway, we-
How they calculate.
How they calculate the park ratio to the population, and we had pinpointed a, a part where the, the new park proposal would be, and if we just had moved it like an inch or so further up on the map, we wouldn't have caught the corner of Beachfront Park, and that reduced our point, so they're considering that request.
Very good. Excellent. Okay, thank you. With that, we will adjourn the city council meeting to the next regular, October seventeenth at five P.M.